All right, good evening. At this time, I will call to order the City of Ole Miss Fair Housing Annual Meeting, held in council chambers, April twenty-third, two thousand twenty-four, at six P. M. At this time, I will turn over the light here to Kerry Kerker to read the statement.
Thank you. The public notice that was published for the Fair Housing public meeting, please take notice that pursuant to Fair Housing law, a public meeting will be held on April twenty-third, two thousand twenty-four, at six P. M. in the round council chambers of the Ole Miss Municipal Buildings, the meeting facility is handpicked accessible. The purpose of this meeting is to provide the public with information on fair housing. The city encourages public attendance, comment, and participation in the meeting. Notice is hereby given that the city is reaffirming its commitment to furthering fair housing. The federal fair housing law, as well as the laws of New York State, prohibit its discrimination from any property owner, landlord, manager, or other person in relation to the sale, rental, and financing dwellings, and in other housing-related transactions because of certain protective characteristics, which include what are not limited to race, color, religion, sex, including gender identity, and sexual orientation, familial status, national origin, and disability. The City of Ole Miss pursuant to fair housing policies has appointed a fair housing officer, community development program coordinator Kerry Kerker, who may be reached at the Department of Community Development at one-one East Gate Street. My phone number is seven-one-six-three-seven-six-five-six-four-seven. My email is kerker@cityofoleam.org, or you may telephone the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development toll-free at one-eight-hundred-six-six-nine-ninety-seven-seventy-seven, or TTY line, one-eight-hundred-nine-two-seven-nine-two-seven-five. And just as an overview, with fair housing, the city had adopted our fair housing plan on April twenty-sixth, that's the last year it's been updated. I review it annually. I don't see any changes that need to be updated or amended at this time. And just as if anyone needs to know the procedure, if a complaint is made, I would take that in, consult with the attorney, complete an entire file and contact.
All right. Do we too quickly do public comments?
No.
Any comments or questions from the all men? All right, saying none, I'll make a motion to adjourn. Could I go second?
Second.
Speaker by Alderman Venion, all in favor, I oppose. We are adjourned to the Fair Housing Annual Meeting. Thank you. All right, at this time, I'll call to order Committee of the Whole for Tuesday, April twenty-third, two thousand twenty-four. I'll let the record show that all aldermen are present. First on our agenda is revisiting our capital projects. This was a list of capital projects that was given to us, we discussed during the budget sessions. So once the budget is passed, we typically revisit these. And so although we don't necessarily need to have a precise strategy, then we will discuss these again during committee meetings on May seventh. I wanted to make sure that everyone had a updated list, and just kind of run through those. As well, I've asked the city auditor to prepare a list of capital projects that could be closed at this time, so we have to manually close them. Once any of all funding related to capital projects has been spent, the projects are completed, then we can close out these capital funds. And so everyone should have a list here, highlighted in green, all right, a list of approximately, it looks like maybe ten to twelve capital projects. Some are a little over, some are a little under. Sometimes, you know, we set aside a specific amount of funding ahead of time, or we receive some sort of grant funding, and then like the actual costs incurred come a little bit over or under. And so upon closing, these capital funds will net twenty-five thousand eight fifty-nine back into either debt service, or can be transferred into another capital account, should we so choose. Is that right, Lenz?
Correct.
Okay. Are there any comments or questions pertaining to the closeout of the capital funds? Yep, all the women call.
So, well, my recommendation would be to go into another capital project as we're trying to work towards some of the really large outstanding things that we have to do. But my primary is that we have asked for a report, actually, I'd ask quarterly, not realizing that it was to be monthly on capital projects. And so, Lenz, I just am gonna ask, will you submit that to us? And that'll keep us abreast of what we have going on here, too, so that...
That is included into the report as to help every month, the last page?
The last page? And that's current, then, right?
Yes.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure, then.
So actually, that's a, I think that's a great point, Sonya. I think what we could even do on May seventh is to request an update on all of our outstanding capital projects, especially the major projects that we have. Where do we need funding for? We have a variety of major projects breaking ground this year, we have some that are in the middle of it. Would it be valuable to go through and take a look at that? Could we request that for the May seventh meeting?
Okay.
Is that, will that, will that help, Sonya?
Yes.
General, you're talking comprehensive of all the things we've talked about, when we've talked about getting, working at that list of risk ranking, what we need to do and what we don't.
No, all I'm talking about is at least what the current ones that are underway. So our current projects, right, what we're committed to, we know we've got East State Street breaking ground, South Union, right? Where do we stand as far as, you know, something that is pretty much wrapped up, but I don't see it being closed out here. Kerry probably, we're probably waiting on funding, like Oak Hill Park, that's pretty much wrapped up now. We haven't closed that out, though. Are we waiting for some reimbursements from New York State for DRI funding and things like that?
Yes, so we are waiting on the contract amendment, which just came last week. And so we were unable to submit the hundred and fifty thousand that was outstanding in DRI funding, and we submitted it yesterday.
So just things like that, Jason, things that, you know, major projects that have happened all around. I think we did it a number of times with Bob Rang when he was here, but I don't think it's been done.
I mean, I think, I think it's all the same thing. We ought to mold it together so there's one go-to for capital projects. See the status of what's going on, and stuff we haven't even funded or considered.
Yeah, okay.
But that way, there's one list, and even if it's stuff we haven't funded, at least we know it's on the list.
I can follow up, Bob, and try to put something, ask Lenz and the mayor to put something like that together for us for May seventh.
Yeah, and we need to, I mean, we need to discuss it, because I think there's things we're gonna remember from the past that aren't gonna be on it, that we need to bring up and get on.
If nothing else, it's a starting point, right?
Right, right. But we gotta, we gotta do it, I feel, you know, I've been here long enough now, that a lot of things get lost in the shuffle, and they're just not getting done.
One more thing, while, while we did put this into a capital project, though, can we get a report out on the hundred and fifty thousand dollars that we committed to the trees, getting rid of the ash trees?
I mean, that's another example of what, you know, has, how much of that has been spent?
I mean, how much is left?
Yeah.
How many trees do we have left? Will it cover it? Inquiry minds wanna know.
Excellent.
So if we can have that, too, I'd appreciate it.
Did you grab all that, Tiffany?
Yep.
Thank you.
And one last thing, can we do something when we be thinking about when we meet on the seventh, the sidewalk program for the city residents and the tree sharing cost for the city residents? I mean, I would like to make sure that we include that, and then after this year, I think it should be part of the annual budget, not a capital project, because it's something that we've been doing now annually.
All right, so specifically this, because I know there gets some confusion when we talk about the sidewalk and tree funding, so we're talking, you're referring to the shared...
The rebate.
Rebate program.
Yes, yes.
With regards to sidewalk replacement for residents.
Yeah.
And the tree program. Yep, okay. Good. All right. Anything else that relates to the green list here? If, as you look through it, if you have any kinds of questions between now and the seventh, please go ahead and shoot an email, reach out to Bill or to Lenz on this. But we try to do that once a year, it's good practice, our auditors have instructed us to do that. And as we keep on top of it, I mean, in the past, there have been some situations where we were way over budget, and this amount is just sitting out there in limbo, and it's gotta, once we close out, it's gotta either go into the general fund or come for the general fund. So this is just good business practice for us, to close these out on an annual basis, if they're once all complete. So next, if you'd wanna take a look at just do a quick run-through here of the capital project requests, these are the same requests that are on the whiteboard over there, we covered them during the budget meetings, each of the different department heads addressed the various items through their presentations. I don't believe there's anything on here that's different. So again, I would ask if you have any comments or questions, please make sure you get those out before May seventh, because we do wanna talk about how are we gonna pay for them? We have, in our current budget, current year to date, we have about fifty thousand left in our contingency line for the general fund, with only the month of May left to go. We've got the full seventy-five thousand dollars in contingency for the water fund, and we've depleted our sewer fund contingency. So that helps us kind of get an idea where we can pull existing funds out of. I think Alderman Venion had requested something that we could also try to build into one of the May committees, is to look through the budget and see if there's any monies that we should be encumbering that are in this year's current budget, that we could, rather than just have it roll into the general fund earmarked, encumber it into a specific capital fund. So I don't know when you think a good time to do that, between now and May seventh, possibly? Each of us could get a copy of the budget, ask Lenz, and each of us go through there and just see if there's any material, I mean, we're not talking, you know, a thousand dollars here and there, but if there are some areas that have been spent half, there's an opportunity to encumber thirty thousand dollars or so, twenty thousand, we could do that. Are there any questions on that? Kerry, you have anything?
Because you'd have the year-to-date on...
From the seventh, just bugging up.
When did we talk about that, Lance? You have that, because the biggest thing's gonna be having that year-to-date.
I usually get it ready by mid, you know, mid-month.
So I think that's...
So we would be through mid-March, right?
May.
Right, but if we wanted to look at it by May first...
If you look at it by May first, you'd be mid-March.
We would be, we would have...
We could see the whole thing for March thirtieth, we won't have anything for April this year.
Would it be, so would it, would it be too late to plan that for the twenty-first of May? And then midnight, and then we would encumber the twenty-eighth of May?
Yeah, because that's, that's before April in this year anyways, so yeah, then that would give us through...
This would have a good thing up till end of this month.
April. Then that would give us everything through April, we'd be missing about one, June first or July first, I guess.
Looking first.
We'd be missing one month.
So why don't we plan for that? Why don't we take a look, Tiffany, so for May committees, on May twenty-first, we're going to look to encumber, if there's any areas where we can encumber funding in this year's budget, and set it aside, and have a finance session on that.
General.
Yeah?
That bottom one, it's all lumped together there, though. Can you, Lenz, can you remember the number, wasn't the repair to lots of Fifteenth Sullivan and all of that separate from that other second half, the lighting at J. C. C. Adams? Wasn't that two separate things?
No. That was at one month's dollar.
Oh, it was? Okay. I was just asking, Jason, because I thought I remembered that repair of the parking lot, like fifty thousand dollars, because I remember kind of questioning that, like...
I'll tell you in a minute, I got that picture somewhere.
Because that one there, we were asking if that number was still accurate, and I thought that, well, it's gonna be better now.
I'll take a look at it, but I believe it was in one month's dollar, like three hundred thousand dollars, all...
That was just the three fifty for everything, and that was just an estimate by the previous deputy district director. So moving forward, we might need to get something.
Okay, I remember being an estimate, because we asked if we can get kind of an updated idea before we can move forward with that. So we'll still need that, on that bottom one. I wonder if maybe the one that was... Yeah, they might have just gave numbers in the conversation, and pieced it all out.
Okay. But yeah, I think I'll try, and so... Are there any comments, further comments, questions on capital projects?
I wanted to add something. So in being in Franchot this weekend, I think in efforts to keep moving, you know, refreshing that park and moving forward and getting, you know, positive things happening in our parks, I wanted to propose that we move ten thousand from the contingency fund to put into doing the Green Street entrance that's there now. The trees all grow completely over the trail, the light is completely covered, so being able to cut back the trees, edge the walkway, get some landscaping in there, maybe some, you know, solar-like footlights, and then as well as maybe some, a small sign at the end, the Green Street side that just says a park, and maybe like that's the start of the walking trail there, because that's that final loop around. Just, you know, I mean, that entranceway looks a little, you know, you'd be skittish to walk in there because it's so dark, and just kind of covered, and, you know, the edges of the edging is growing out into the walkway. The walkway, you know, we have extra millings to kind of rule that out, and just so it's even, so someone walking, you know, isn't walking on uneven ground as well. And so I just think, you know, we have this money in contingency, we don't know when the new entrance will be done or established, and this, again, is really investing in our parks as we've been discussing right along.
Yeah, when I was over there, I don't know, Vernon, if you've got a chance to take a look at that entrance, it's, it's, it's way overgrown, it's, I wouldn't feel safe walking, walking through there. There is a light, it is illuminated, but you wouldn't know it, it is, I agree with Jen, and so when we were taking a look at that, the, it's something that we have maintained in the past, and it's just years have gone by that it's probably been addressed. The blacktop on the walking path, actually, that walking path connects directly to the trail that goes around the outside, the walking or jogging trail around the outside of Franchot Park. So as we try to beautify our parks, if there's a way to just take five or ten thousand dollars to improve what's already there, I mean, we've been hearing now, I don't know, for the last three years, about the entranceway, the entranceway, you know, where we demolished the two homes there on Green Street, it still hasn't happened. So I would at the very least support cleaning up this entrance, putting in maybe even a sign to indicate this is an entrance into Franchot Park, you know, and so, yeah, I think that's a great idea.
And I think that really, again, that trickles out into, you know, the Green Street area as well, and that is, you know, really, that's a positive thing for that, those residents as well, and so I think, I think that's really important.
Where is that entrance, General? It's at Fourth or Seventh Street?
The new entrance?
Yeah. No, it's on the big way down.
So the, the walkway that we're talking about?
Yeah.
Is right at the end of Fourth Street?
I think it's, it's kind of in between.
Is it in between, yeah?
It's in between two homes, there's chain link fence on either side, and there's a walkway, a walkway path that's probably maybe seven feet wide, ten feet wide?
And if you go to the...
Probably nine to ten feet.
Come out of the park and go to the right, that's kind of where those two houses were.
What I would suggest, Jen, for the meeting on the seventh, when we talk about these other capital funds, is if you could take some pictures.
Yeah.
Print out some pictures of that, and bring in to everyone.
The only other comment I'd like to make about that, you're probably right, it probably does make burning down our trees and stuff, but isn't, seems like every time we do tree work, we always contract it out or bill someplace. Can't, can't BPW or our Parks Department prune trees, trim trees, to save us a little bit of money instead of going to a contractor?
You know, all I can, I can speak, that that's a major question. Again, I don't know, I mean, I think we've asked that question before, I don't know if there is, you need a special insurance model, but I would think we were covered under, I'm sure we have pretty high degrees of insurance in the city, but so...
It seems like that type of work would be done in-house, that's what I'm just saying, it'd be a lot cheaper to do it in-house, and it probably needs done, but...
Or a retired alderman that has, you know...
I can go down there, I got plenty of BPW experience, I can supervise, right?
Maybe the tree committee can address that, too.
Yeah, no, I think we could follow up with, I think you could follow up with Bill, with the mayor on that also. So some of it, I think, can be done in-house, you know, I think ten thousand is a starting point, maybe it only takes five, but I know Jen talked about maybe playing some perennials around there, doing some landscaping, and probably the most expensive part would be, well, maybe not, Dave, I don't know, like if we could even put the millings down, because the blacktop there is really rough shape, so if we have it, we own it, and we should take care of it.
Especially, I don't know the flip streets the city's gonna repay this year, but I'm sure we're gonna get some millions, and millions work good if they print a rotor down there and pack it down, or millions are...
The street, the streets that were the aldermen voted in favor of the budget, those streets will get done this year. All right.
You're running out of streets, aren't you?
Are there any comments or questions further? All right, so make sure you come up with your questions list, Sonya, one thing else I'm gonna throw on this capital project list is the funding that you talked about with regards to the sidewalk and the homeowner tree program, too, because that's typically, what do we usually do, twenty-five thousand in each of those funds, if I'm not mistaken, something like that.
Yeah, I think we had thirty thousand in sidewalk and maybe twenty-five in tree.
I would need to look it, look it up.
But I'm sure it was thirty, so yeah.
I know those usually...
And it would be helpful to know what's expended, so that, you know, then we'll have an idea, are we on, on track with, with thirty and twenty-five or whatever it is, or is that number low for our residents? Because, you know, ideally, we'll, we'll, I think both of these benefit the residents, and it also benefits the city overall with the look of the city, because I know that as everyone probably has had people reach out to them regarding the trees and the cost for tree removal and such.
And I don't, I don't know how true to that tree program, but I'd be interested to know to when that turn people down. I mean, I get letters, and people are told, the tree's gotta come down, but if we don't have any money in the budget, what do we do? Is it over? And we're dealing with it at the end of the budget? So I'd like to know where that washes out.
That's, that's, so as far as the sidewalk stuff goes, I know they were told upfront, no, this can't come down, right? And they'll, they'll get it put on the list for the next year, but a dangerous tree, I don't know, Jason, that's a really good question.
Is that sidewalk, unexhausted for this fiscal year?
For, well, because this would have taken place last summer, so I'm ninety-nine percent sure. Do you have an idea, Lenz, where the current sidewalk, where last summer, is that exhausted, the money that we set aside?
Look, I can give you the correct number tomorrow, but I don't believe there's about twenty-five, twenty thousand in that one.
In the sidewalk fund?
Yes.
The resident, the council sidewalk program, that is called?
It's called the homeowner...
The homeowner. Yes, could you, could you verify that?
Yes, I will, because when, when the county made us whole...
Yeah.
We had some money come in, I put that money in, in there, same as the tree program, there's some money put in there, too. Then the tree one is about maybe eighty grand, and then maybe about thirty.
That's a base then for this.
Oh, yeah.
We still got time this fiscal year to put some stuff through there.
Yeah, I mean, if there's people that live...
I still have questions about, why would we be... Well, we can, we can...
That's another meaning, yeah.
I'll follow off-line about that.
Go down to the second question, because I was gonna say that we should look at moving the amount up with the cost of contractor labor of the twenty-five thousand, the number won't go as far as it did when we started using that number a couple of years ago.
Well, we raised it already.
I know.
I do remember that, and that's when we discovered the two sidewalk programs, so, but usually it's exhausted fairly quickly, so but here the...
But we have changed the terms of that program now, right? So now people have to pay in advance, they can't...
Yeah, we have to change the term, and also we have to split up the budgets now. There's one for complaints, and one for the several rebates. So before last year, everything was into one. So the several complaints were taking money away from the rebates, now they are separate now.
I think it'll run more as we intended this time around, between, because a lot of times when residents would use the sidewalk program, they would let it roll to taxes, right? And, and so we were always in the red on the, on the program, and waiting to get reimbursed, and so on. This time around, it should be split out, and then we, a few months back, with Robert, we replaced the language, so they have to pay in advance, right?
Yeah, they have to pay some, exactly how much it is, but they have to pay something. Also, the way we do it now, we keep track of everything that goes to taxes, and when it comes back, we put it back in.
And we don't allow, was it more than two blocks or something for the city contractor to do? Do you remember this?
Yeah.
Because we put some language in there, because somebody was, you know, just letting the city contractor do the entire four thousand dollars, and then they wouldn't pay the bill, it was a lot.
Yeah, there was something.
There was something like that, and so, yeah, we tried to clean that up. Okay. All right, we can talk more about that on May seventh. Next, I'll bring up PL thirty-four dash twenty-four by Mayor Eliot to declare the month of April two thousand twenty-four is Fair Housing Month in the City of Ole Miss. Kerry?
That's all I have left. Yeah, and I know I can corroborate the question afterwards. Thank you.
Is there any comments or questions? Okay, this is a standard that we do every year. Could I get a motion?
A motion.
Motion is made by Alderman Robinson. Could I get a second? Second by alderman, alderwoman, all in favor. I oppose motion carried and is referred to tonight's regular meeting. Next, we have PL fifty-five dash twenty-four by Mayor Eliot to adopt the pro-housing communities pledge relating to the Homes and Community Renewal Pro-Housing Communities Program. Kerry, anything further on that?
Yes, so part of the pledge is, it really stems back from the governor's executive order, and it's encouraging communities to try and take some action to grow our housing stuff. And so ultimately, we would sign out the pledge, do a letter of intent. Code enforcement is working on the data right now, relating actually to the last five years, and it has to do with the permits that were done for the housing. So those would be our next steps.
All right, are there any comments or questions? Saying none, I'll entertain this conversation. I'll make a motion, could I get a second?
Sure.
Second by Alderman Venion, all in favor. I oppose motion carried, is referred to tonight's regular meeting. Next, we've got PL thirty-six dash twenty-four from Mayor Eliot to authorize the mayor to enter into a consulting agreement with Plywood Studios for the costs associated with the study to relocate the current John J. Ash Community Center and youth recreation activities to a new location in the Ole Miss Mall. to a new location in the Oleen Mall. Carrie?
I've been running into some stumbling blocks the last couple of years from this being talked about, adding some technical professionals, it's relating to, you know, what would that look like if this were to be the viable project, and to, I know what the square footage is at both of the facilities that we use for the current program, for the youth and the seniors, um, however, I need help from, I, I went to an engineering firm and an architect firm, um, and requested, quote, proper, um, procurement for the city, um, I need help with the budget estimating and square footage, see if that is something the council would entertain in the future.
All right, so just to kind of circle back, was it maybe one, two years ago that we went, uh, the council, one year ago?
One year, last year.
Yeah, okay, so a year ago, uh, the council was invited up to around the boy, is that right? Uh, to, to, to tour of the facility, the, the old mall, that has now been converted into community center, um, senior living, et cetera, and, um, it's the same developer that has purchased the Oleen Center Mall here, um, and so one of the items that was discussed was the feasibility of moving recreational activities, uh, into a facility at the Oleen Mall. So, just kind of to remind everybody what that is stemming from, uh, do we have a, a dollar value on this contractor?
Yes, it's thirty-two hundred, and I have, um, fifty-seven hundred in my consulting line item, I only use three hundred dollars this year.
Okay. All right, so, um, you can obviously take this within your, your current budget, um, so are there any, because I know, I know that's what Dave's question is going to be, so, uh, are there any other comments or questions? Alden Anastasia, what you got?
Yeah, it says to relocate the current John Ash Community Center, so is he talking about relocating the community center, John Ash Community Center to the mall?
Just the activities that go on, not the whole building, Dave.
Well, I mean, what are we going to do with the John Ash Community Center once we move it? We're going to be building there, talking with Sony earlier, we just spent thousands of dollars on the HVAC system over there, so I guess I'm confused, and I don't know what the hell he wants to do, so...
But is that here right now?
Yeah, so I think this should be postponed until the mayor's here to explain what he, what his plans are, and, and why this is beneficial to the city.
Alden Robinson?
I think, I agree with Anastasia, that doesn't happen often, um, I have some questions, I got some things I'd like to have answered, uh, I know this is just for the architect aspect, but, I mean, my biggest question is, if someone else owns it, and you want us to go in there, then why are we paying for the architect design? You pay for the architect design to see if it best fits us, and, I don't know, I, I guess I'm looking at it from the opposite end, so, I, I just have questions, and I would love to get an answer on it before moving forward on that one.
Alden Ben?
So, yeah, so I'm, I'm going to go with them, because I base it on the whole, if this is a, a real need or just a want, at this point, with so many other things that need to be done that are higher priority than, in my mind, a community center, city garage is still appetated, salt shed that's condemned, we haven't even talked about money for those things, so I'm going to agree with them, so if you need a motion to postpone this.
Once we're done with the discussion. Alden, call.
I actually agree with, with them, I, I see value in, in centralizing things, but we just spent money on the HVAC system, which was, came in at a significantly higher cost than we were initially quoted. We're going to have a building that is just going to be, what, sitting there vacant, hoping that we'll maybe sell, um, I just don't see that happening, and while in an ideal world, if we didn't have a space already dedicated to the senior activity and stuff, now, there may be value in looking at the youth rec, because I think that, that maybe, if we're talking about, like, down at, uh, the school where they run it currently, maybe there's some value in that, but in regards to the John Ash Community Center, I just think that we have many other projects that need time, funding, and focus.
Jason? So I, I mean, I, I remember this project quite well, visiting that center, um, though the costs that may be associated may not be popular, and the time and the way the budgets are shaping out, um, I think it's, it's important to consider moving a community center to the mall, one, because, and, and I guess this is what I would expect, Carrie, to be asking this money to come back to us, to explain to us why it's a good idea, um, and then I would hope even that would maybe include, can we market the properties if we own them that, that we'd be relinquishing or not using so much? But that, we're going to get, you know, the developer wants something to draw attention to that space, so they're, I remember they're offering, um, basically to us, like, hey, your rent's going to be cheap or nothing for twenty years, but you've got to build up the space, that's, that's what was kind of put to us. So I think it's important to at least spend the money to understand whether it makes sense or not, and what would the cost be?
So, I agree with Alden and Panis, um, in this, uh, so number one, by, by going into, and, and I agree that we can postpone it tonight, all right, I, I think the mayor needs to be here, I'm not going to speak on behalf of the mayor, uh, I believe there have been interested parties, uh, in possible contractual things that we can't discuss here, um, with regards to the John Ash Community Center, so I, I think there is, it's part of the feasibility of, of what, you know, that, no, that, no, the building, building would not just sit vacant, right? But, number two, is for thirty-two hundred dollars within our existing budget, um, obviously, it, it's not committing us to doing any multimillion dollar project, it's to explore what that feasibility, uh, feasibility looks like, we don't have a dollar value on the costs associated with something like that, and we also know that, as one of the biggest eyesores in Oleen, um, it's also probably one of the biggest opportunities at that location, right, at, at the Oleen Center Mall, and we don't do anything, you know, without, obviously, a lot of strategy, obviously, a lot of getting grants and applying for grants, and going for programs based on community renewal and development, um, but you can't ask for money if you don't have an idea of what something's going to cost. So, I wouldn't be in favor of just saying, no, we don't want to spend the money, because we don't even know what money is, and we can't apply for any grants without knowing what that, that dollar value is. Uh, and then lastly, what I would say, why we should explore this further, is because throughout our budget process, we heard that recreation is probably one of the most cash positive streams of revenue for the entire city. The, uh, facility, the ice rink is, is, runs profitable, unlike other departments, um, it, it brings a ton of revenue into the city while also providing valuable service, it's also the same reason why we're in, in, investing in, in the splash park over there. This could be something similar along that line, where, um, you know, we're able to invest and expand the services we provide the youth, the seniors, et cetera, the, the community, um, while also something to break even. So, there's a lot of unknowns, I know, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm rambling, but for thirty-two hundred dollars, I think, you can't, you don't have something to talk about unless you've got something to talk about, and, and I think it's worth getting that data. But, with that being said, I agree, I'm not going to speak on behalf of the mayor without him being here, uh, and, and obviously, you know, maybe he and Carrie can, can come back, so I would be happy to postpone this, um, if I'll wait, if there's any other comments. Alder, Alder, in favor?
I guess I'll talk since I'm a little... I also agree that it's worth exploring, uh, because I think it's an opportunity to, um, uh, generate revenue for the city, um, if we're increasing some of the youth activities, especially youth activities, or, uh, things that could draw other people in, so I'm in favor of that, fixed flooring that, so, again, and just like Jason and John said, just having, what is it, you know, going to cost, having an idea of what that looks like, um, and having walked through the mall recently, there's, it's, there's such a great opportunity there, so, that's just sitting, sadly.
John, if you'd like to request that, when we find out how much we're paying, I'm assuming at St. John's, that, uh, the recreation activities will be moving from, so kind of request to see what the rent is that we pay at St. John's versus what the new rent will be at this other location, and I, like I said, I'm very curious to see what his future plans are with the building there across the street, like, if that does move, what's he going to do with that building? There's, well, I, I just feel there's much more important things in the city of Oleen right now to, to help a guy from Rochester develop a property that he bought, and it's a private property now.
All right. Okay, so, uh, seeing anything further? All right, so I'll make a motion to postpone this to the next committee of the whole, um, could I get a second?
Second.
Second by Alden Robinson, all in favor. I oppose, motion carried, and this is postponed to... Fourteenth. All right, um, PL thirty-seven dash twenty-four by Mayor Iliot to enact global law two dash two thousand twenty-four to continue a moratorium on the creation of new solar farms and energy production facilities in the city of Oleen. Carrie, do you want to address this?
Uh, yes, so, we did the March 8th of one year, we are still working on the city's comprehensive development plan, and I'm requesting that we do a better year extension, because I'm going to see, you know, what that flushes out from the creation of this plan, and with, um, suggestions for zoning or placement and just proper planning of this, um, and not have them just go in to where they're allowed now according to the zoning, and that's not what, you know, our vision is for the next twenty years.
All right, um, Carrie, just ballpark, can you, do we have a timeline when the comprehensive plan's going to be wrapping up?
Yes, um, we just held a committee meeting, um, our next one will be scheduled this summer, and I'm hopeful to have it done, um, towards the end of this year, and for the council.
So by the end of the...
Calendar year.
Calendar year, okay. And that's something that the council has to go down, yes?
It is, yes, and it'll also get referred to our zoning boards, planning boards, the county planning board as well, for review and suggested changes, um, you'll have the draft in hand prior to, I guess, the...
Okay. So I, I think, so I'll just throw my, my comments on this, um, and I think it's important that we continue the moratorium on the creation of new solar farms, um, just for the sake of finalizing the comprehensive development plan, um, I don't think you can open up to the last remaining commercial development areas in the city, um, to, to allow the build out of facilities that, that essentially had zero cultural or social, really even economic value to, to our community, um, so I, although I, I like free markets, um, you know, I don't think it necessarily makes it good for community, um, and, and so I think it's a reasonable timeframe to allow the comprehensive plan to play out. I'll open it up to comments and questions. Alder, woman, call.
I do curiosity, have we had anyone even apply or approach the city for, um, to put up a solar farm in the last year?
That would be a question for code enforcement, um, because any, in, inquiry or, um, permitting or applications would start with that. I can, um, follow up.
Jason?
Carrie, do we have any idea, you know, because we do have a solar farm that we're, we were part of over on the old industrial grounds, uh, what does the tax base look like, if they come through those? I mean, do they have, like, a tax free period, or are they exempt, or do you know any of that information?
I wasn't involved in any of the pilot or agreements, and that, that was handled, I believe, in the mayor's office, and legal.
Could we get some information on that lens? If we receive tax revenue from the existing solar farms? Or if they're based off of pilots, or even, you know, if you could give some information for us on that, that'd be great. Any other, uh, comments or questions? Alden Robinson?
Yeah, I recall this from last year, uh, and I remember stating, uh, last year that I am for, uh, the advancement of solar panels, uh, and so forth, uh, in our region, I know I suggested it for the city of Oleen, for municipal building, uh, suggested it for a property I believe we should purchase, uh, less for sale, to build a solar farm, uh, for the communities. I know the reasoning we were given last year was not for comprehensive plan, I do not recall that at all, but I do remember stating that we do not need to extend it another year, that we need to figure out what we're going to do and do it, and we're being presented again with another extension, uh, by another year or less when the comprehensive plan is done, um, I, I, I mean, we have the ability to create a law and put it in place, and then if it needs amending or change, so be it, but, on the other hand, I do understand that we could just wait another year, but to me, it just seems, it's the same thing, where things get presented, and then there's a big pump, and then things are presented, and then there's another pump, um, and I feel like next year, or regardless of how the comprehensive plan goes, there'll be another year with another pump coming for this same exact thing, so, uh, I know I'm going to be a no, uh, pretty much out of principle because of the fact that I believe we should develop solar panels here in the city of Oleen, especially here within our municipal building, so...
It doesn't preclude, uh, under, this is for a large scale farm.
Outside, or for properties, because we want to protect our properties in, for the city of Oleen.
Yeah, it's, uh, the large scale farms is more to our end zone, um, I do believe there's been some commercial businesses that did install solar on the roof here of recent.
And, and just to add, I know, just, um, I do recall that last year it being, because we were just getting started with the comprehensive plan, we wanted to protect those commercial properties, um, so I do recall that being one of the reasons, because we didn't know what was the suggestions or recommendations would have been, um, moving forward with that.
I'll play devil's advocate for a second, so, obviously, we, we, we just got done talking about, like, the Oleen Center Mall, what if the, the, the plan was to demolish that and, and put up a solar panel farm? What value does that bring to Oleen, and I think it's worthwhile to allow the comprehensive plan to play out. I mean, I think we're all on the same page, we want to see development, and it's, it happens, it's happening, right? Slower than we'd like, but it is happening, I mean, eight years ago, when we got out of here, Oleen looked different than it does today, and, and I, I think that's, you got to stay the course, um, because I don't know what value, uh, wind farm or solar panel farm or whatever would bring to demolish the mall and put those down.
So I remember doing a little research, isn't there, wasn't there some restrictions on how, how long you could have the moratorium and how long you could kind of renew it? Wasn't there something in New York State about that? Wasn't there something in New York State about that? I, I remember doing the research back then, but I can't remember what it was.
Yeah, I believe Jack did that some research, I think communities can extend six months to a year.
That's, okay, that was kind of my memory, 'cause I was thinking it was six months after the initial one. So, in playing devil's advocate... With devil's advocate, you know, and, and clearly nobody's demolishing the mall, but it is good business for the city to invest in a solar farm so that we can decrease our electric cost and get a rebate program. So I think we have to be mindful of not looking too hypocritical with this when, when we receive a rebate program from that. So I, just in terms of that, do I think that we need to be mindful of where they're placed? I'm in agreement, we don't wanna tear down the mall, nobody's gonna do that. Probably nobody wants it right next to their home, but I do think that there's value to, um, the city in the same way there's value to having EV charging stations, right, when we're talking about, um, looking at renewable energy and something that might be able to potentially drive down the cost of electric for our residents, so I, I think there's two parts to that. I think we need to, you know, is it six months or a year that we can do the extension? Do you know, is, with the extension for the moratorium in New York State, 'cause there was some regulation around it? Was, can we extend for six months or a year, or?
My recommendation is the answer to that is yes, but I, I was working, that was probably six or eight months ago that I was involved in it. I don't wanna declare that that's the...
If I remember correctly, it was, you could do two six months, but no greater than one year, if I remember correctly. I feel like this, and the conversation, but the conversation also was, there was neighboring communities that were looking at when we did that. Vernon is also correct that we thought that we could have a local law in place that would answer the restrictions on community, because it's a, I think it's called a community solar farm, it's a five acres, right, with the...
Yeah, corlax.
It's a large scale, so there's community, and then there's even a larger one beyond that, but the community five-acre one was the one that was the target of it. Not the homes, but Vernon also is correct in stating that there was a conversation about not extending it, that we could have the local law with the restrictions by this time.
Yeah, so I, I do see where other, I think, I think you're right, you can extend it six months, but no more than a year.
Yeah, it was two six months.
So would that mean that we would, six months, and then we would reevaluate in another six months?
Yeah, if you go one more six months, then you get no more moratoriums.
I would be fine with, although, to put a timeline, I mean, I, I totally understand, I, I get Vernon, I get, totally understand and appreciate what you're saying, we should just pass a local law that says, listen, in this particular zone, right, our commercial districts where we on the back whatever road, homo street backwards, no, there's no major development, right? Sure, we'd rather see an investment in, in clean energy and solar farms and, and get some tax credits or electric credits. I get that, I'm on board with that, I just don't think it's smart for us to open that floodgate without having the proper game plan in place. Alderman Robinson?
So, I'll compromise on the fly, I don't have a problem with that. If, if there, we're waiting for the comprehensive plan, she said somewhere around the end of the year, we're roughly seven months away. I don't recall the day that this, uh, moratorium will expire.
I believe it's coming up in June, Tiffany, do you recall when I filed that?
So, June here.
So, and so to my point, if it expires in June, I, I wouldn't have a problem with ex, uh, extending uh, this for six months, but another year, but six months will be fine, and that should give plenty of time for, I mean, 'cause like you said, we're, it's gonna come out to us early, the comprehensive plan, everyone will have a chance to review, it's gonna go here, here, here. So we're looking at maybe January, February, if that's the case, then it would make sense that we could extend it one more time because we've already then seen the comprehensive plan, we already know what we're looking at, and then we'd be able to compare that to what we're looking for in this, uh, the solar, the rules on the solar, uh, farms, and then that would give us, I guess, a little more guidance or guidelines to follow.
Are there any concerns with doing a six-month extension, is that a twelve-month extension at this time?
Yeah.
Is that what you're saying, is, is go with a six-month extension for right now?
Yes.
Alright, were there any, uh, any problems with that?
Compromises.
Six months.
This current one is for June seventh.
Alright, um, so, um, Alderman Robinson, do you want to make a motion to amend PL thirty-seven dash twenty-four?
Sure, I'll make a motion.
To... Amend it to extend the moratorium for six months.
Well, it doesn't even say time.
I don't know if it's, uh, let's look at the resolution.
No resolution, so it's probably gonna go to public hearings?
Yes, uh...
Oh, we need a public hearing?
There has to be a public hearing.
Okay.
So can we just add the language of six months then?
So is that what will go into the public hearing then, Tiffany? Is the six month?
The six month will go into the actual law they want to see.
Okay, alright, um, we don't need to delay a minute, okay.
Take my motion back.
On motion, your motion. Alright, any comments, questions, seeing nothing further, can I get a motion on thirty-seven dash twenty-four?
I'll make, I'll, I'll make a motion, I'll make it.
I'll second.
Motion is made by Alderman Robinson, seconded by Alderman, Alderman McCall. All in favor? I opposed, motion carried, um, and legislation will be drafted, it'll be sent out to the Alderman this week. We will hold a public hearing, a vote, to occur on May fourteenth.
Lot going on May fourteenth.
Next, we've got PL thirty-eight dash twenty-four by Mayor Elio to authorize the transfer of seventeen thousand five hundred and seventy-one dollars and twenty-six cents from the first-time homebuyer account to capital fund two zero four, the inclusive playground equipment. Tip, uh, I'm sorry, Carrie?
Uh, these are the repayments that we've collected from our old homeownership assistance programs. Um, in twenty-seventeen, the state had changed the rules on program income, so if we'd received, um, thirty-five thousand dollars or more, we'd have to provide it to the state, so I tracked it, um, with a lot of diligence throughout that time frame, that's through the state's fiscal year. And so, um, that money, um, I'm requesting that it go to Marcus Park. Last year, we used it for Trailhead Parkland, and the year before, just for history prior to that, it was used, um, in code enforcement for some demolition. And then, um, the initial program income in twenty-seventeen, we took down a few components. Back then, we had ninety-nine thousand.
Alright, are there any comments or questions? Alright, uh, Alderman came as sponsor.
You have some, a motion on that one since it's Marcus Park?
Man, you're jumping in like Dave tonight, what is going on?
I'm not even for reelection, I bought it.
Wow, and wow, alright.
Baby, you're seconded?
Yes.
Let's give the council a voice.
Alright, so motion is made by Alderman Robinson, seconded by Alder, then Anastasia, all in favor?
Aye.
Vote, and Carrie, refer to tonight's regular meeting. Uh, so the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-five budget amendment, um, so, I think you're good to go? Okay. See you, Carrie, thank you. Alright, so I'll do my best, uh, Lenz, correct me if there's anything that's incorrect about this. We've all been briefed, um, on the way that the budget was, uh, presented. The, uh, there was a, a discrepancy, um, in, in the budget. It's obviously a complex process, and there needs to be an amendment made to correct the real property tax amount, uh, the, the revenue. The expenses remain the same, and Sonia and I met with the mayor and Lenz, uh, the city assessor, as well as Jerry, uh, this past, well, yesterday, I guess, and went over the discrepancy. This amendment will correct the rates of, well, I should say the rates remain the same, it corrects the revenue stream. And so, we wanted to make sure that the real property tax amount, uh, doesn't change, um, and it still remains was it three point seven?
Three point seven.
Three point seven percent. And in the amendment, resolution forty-three dash twenty-four, there are some minor changes on pages three, five, six, seven, thirty-five, and thirty-seven to correct, uh, the amount values. And so, in order to make sure that our, we are maintaining the correct historical tax rates, we are using, uh, some of the temporary municipal assistance, um, that has been granted to the city, so as a part of the New York State budget, uh, the New York State budget which has recently been passed, the city of Olian is set to receive somewhere in the tune of two-hundred-and-fifty thousand?
Two-hundred-and-sixty.
Two-hundred-and-sixty thousand dollars of additional municipal assistance. And so, this will take a portion of that, with the remaining portion going into a capital fund for the council to decide what to invest in number. Uh, Lenz, I don't know, how was that, is that alright? Are there any comments or questions?
I just was gonna...
Alderman McCall?
Yeah, I was just gonna, Lenz, what you gave us Monday, that did not have the corrected pages, right? So can you send me those corrected pages?
I will.
Okay, well, maybe you should send it to all of us, or we just have it.
I emailed those pages out today, but I will get the book back together and ask them to look at it.
Thanks, I didn't get all my email right today, so, but, yeah, and if you could just...
I will, I will tomorrow.
Perfect, thank you.
So can I just ask a question, 'cause I'm confused? You said we got two-hundred-and-sixty thousand dollars from the state or the state with the state's acting?
Yes.
And if you said it was for assistance, what, what, why, why would they give us a refund on two sixty?
Not a refund, it's additional assistance. They would not increase the aim monies, so instead, they gave up essentially, they've done it the last couple of years, um, like one time here, um, you know, you can use this funding for...
Projects that you need.
Projects within your community, um, on, what's the term I'm looking for?
Unrestricted?
Unrestricted, yeah.
So I'm, I'm guessing, I'm still a little confused, I mean, if the state has given us two-hundred-and-sixty thousand dollars back that we didn't expect to unallocated that we could use, I guess, in any way the city gains necessary, why couldn't we, and it's not too late, why couldn't we have used it to keep the taxes at two percent?
Well, because, well, first of all, it was after the fact, because our budget had to pass before theirs did, they extended theirs, so theirs just found, when did they just pass theirs?
They just passed theirs this week, yeah.
And so, in order for us to be able to, um, see, unfortunately, the, where we're at with the timeline, we, we asked, I think Sonia asked whether or not this could be, wait until the next regular meeting, um, but our tax bills have to go out. And so that's why we're dealing with this tonight, and I wish the mayor was here to put those two cents in, but, uh, he's not, so, um...
Yeah, I wish he was here too, but I'm gonna ask him, why can't we use the money alone? If you have, if you have any comments, let me know, but it's like, why can't we use the money? We're making an amendment now to change the, the tax rate, it went down a few cents, I do, I do believe it went from sixteen eighty-some to I don't know, it went down...
Sixteen eighty-seven, sixteen eighty-one.
I, I read something where it went down a little bit, so it's like, if we can amend the budget to lower the tax rate a few cents, why can't we apply this money to bring it down, bring it down to two percent of taxes?
We wouldn't vote on that either, Dave, so, um, Sonia?
So, in an ideal world, we would have no tax increase ever. We wouldn't, because would I like that, would Jason like that, we would all like that. The reality is that those projects that we have, the salt shed that we don't even talk about anymore, um, all of those things cost millions of dollars and we don't have it. We just don't have it, and while it would be nice to give tax relief in a small amount to each and every taxpayer, ultimately, the things that they've asked us for is the infrastructure and to make sure that things are going smoothly, so I see this as an investment in everyone that lives in the community. Um, because then we can look at those projects and say, you know, where do we need to invest the money? You know, it might be increasing, um, the tree program, which by the way, I think I hear about almost weekly, the sidewalk program, things that can, can assist, um, more than, you know, I'm never gonna be dismissive of the cost of our taxes or even a small increase. But the benefit of putting it into a capital project and being able to use it for something that's going to, um, benefit the city longer term, I think it's a short-term versus a long-term benefit, and, and, you know, whether we could adjust it, amend it, even if we could, I have to say that I would not vote for that, because I think that we have this list of projects, half the stuff that we've talked about the last couple of years aren't even on it, it seems like. So, we need to have, going back to, I think it was J, or JR, Jason who said, you know, can we have that whole comprehensive list that we've been looking at for the next, for the last several years, and then begin to chip away at it, so I appreciate your diligence in, in wanting to hold, you know, us accountable and making sure that, you know, the, the residents have the best deal in terms of their taxes, but I also think that we, we will do them a disservice if we don't put, but the money will go into a capital project, um, that will not go into contingency or that that we talked about, which means that, you know, at the end of the time, we're not gonna go like, oh, where is that money? We will know what we spent it on, whether or not, you know, it's, it's something for the PCs or the Bartlett house, or whatever we need to do to make Olian better for our residents, so that's my take on it at least.
So, I mean, we've got, we've got, we've got a list here, right, of, of, you know, when you talk about things that we've heard again and again and again, it's like we never really find the funds to do this, but speaking of, as we try to beautify the parks, how many of the driveways and the parking lots of those parks are deplorable, right? Are, you know, like a minefield, and right there was an estimated three-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars to address grand shot foreigners and, and the different driveways, um, to repair those, those lots that we have, uh, around the city that fall by the wayside. There's no shortage, right, so whether, you know, you can't consistently, again, I, I would disagree with that all day long to, to just be able to say to your voters, so you can easily re-elect and be held at two percent, or, or whatever the case is. I, I, I'm not saying that, I'm not saying that, but, but, but sometimes the hard, the hard, the hardest thing to do is to, is to raise the tax, right, above the tax cap, because we have still this longer list of things to invest in and, and to repair and to fix. And the money will get put to work, it, it's not going into like a vacation fund, so, um, so I, I think that, Jason?
Johnny, I mean, I think it's work, our frustration comes from what Sonia was touching on, what Dave's touching on, is that we need, we need to visualize that, we need that comprehensive list, something we see all the time, something we add to all the time, and that it, it, it needs to be a living visual instrument, that it's visual for Dave and anybody else, it's, what do we need money for? So that when this happens, we can say, hey, we, we don't need to be lower than the taxes, we gotta pass this.
That's a great point.
I just have a question too, before we can turn the other, um, I think I was told that there was a seventy thousand dollar discrepancy, that's what the amendment is for the twenty-four, twenty-five budget, so that's meaning that there's gonna be about a hundred and ninety K left over that you're gonna use towards capital projects for that whiteboard, if I'm correct, right?
In the ballpark.
In the ballpark, it's about a hundred and ninety thousand dollars. In the ballpark, it's about a hundred and ninety thousand dollars.
Don't say seventy-two thousand.
No, seventy-two thousand, eight to one percent, I do believe.
I know, I was just encouraging you not to say seventy-two thousand.
But give me another thing I'd like to add. Sonya, you did a great job as far as finance, chairwoman goes this past year. Is, I mean, I know it's, it's easy to raise taxes, but it's harder to control the budget and control the spendings and say no. So maybe if, just a recommendation is like, as we continue on and we're just starting next year's budget in June, after three months, you got June, July, August, that's the first quarter. Give a look to Lenz, September, to figure out what's left over from the first quarter. And maybe in October, if we could have a finance meeting to see how we're progressing with the budget. Are we in line with it? Do the same thing for the following six months. It seems like we don't talk about budgetary items until February fifteenth, when the mayor gives us the budget to us. So this way, we stay abreast of it throughout the coming year and kind of watch what's going on. We'd be better attuned when it comes time for next spring when we're talking about next year's budget.
I agree, Dave. I agree, all it takes is us to do it. It's not that we don't get the budget. Lenz gives us a copy of year-to-date spend every single month, right? We all get it. We can just put, we can just put it on the agenda.
Yeah.
It's our agenda, so just put it on, let's put it on the agenda.
Well, let's do it quarterly, because I think then we are, right, we're, we, there's, we're not surprised come at the end where this line is over seventy thousand and, you know, and then it perhaps helps us to understand, you know, I think for department heads talking about encumbering money, that it behooves them to take a look and say, where might they have some money to encumber so that the projects that they want and need done can get done? And so they could help us out also with that, where maybe they can see that, you know, there's, there's going to be ten thousand in this line and, you know, that helps us when we're looking at what your projects are, right? How are we going to pay for the projects that you want and need? So let's plan to do that quarterly, so quarterly then.
June, July, August, give Lenz, September, and maybe October.
Yeah, so, okay, so we'll do that. Good suggestion.
Anything else? I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Wait, we need to do?
It'll be amended in a regular meeting.
Okay.
Can I go second?
Second.
Second, by Alderman McColl, in my favor.
John, before you start, PL, PL thirty-three dash twenty-four, is that right?
That is correct. There was a typo on the last agenda, that was thirty-two, so I corrected that.
Carry on.
Just making a note here. Because I do think, okay, I'll make a motion, I'll call to order the regular meeting of the common council for Tuesday, April twenty-third, two thousand twenty-four. The clerk will call the attendance call.
Alderman Benyon?
Yes.
Alderman Panis?
Here.
Alderwoman Corney?
Here.
Alderwoman McCall?
Here.
Alderman Robinson?
Here.
Alderman Anastasia?
Here.
President Crawford?
Here.
All the present?
Please rise, begin vocation, and the public audience.
Heavenly Father, we come to you today asking for your guidance, wisdom, and support as we begin this meeting. Help us to engage in meaningful discussion, allow us to grow closer as a group and nurture the bonds of this community. In your name we pray.
All the agents to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic of Canada, for the same one nation, under God, indivisible, liberate and just as one.
Reading, correcting, and approval of the minutes of the previous regular meeting?
Regular meeting of the Olean Common Council was held on Tuesday, April ninth, two thousand twenty-four, at six P.M. Present for Alderman Crawford, Benyon, Panis, Corney, McCall, and Robinson. Alderman Anastasia is answer.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the previous regular meeting. Can I go second, second, by Alderman Benyon, in my favor? I oppose, motion carried, committee reports on unfinished council business?
None.
Communications from the mayor.
Special proclamation to recognize Fair Housing Month. Whereas the Fair Housing Act was signed on April eleventh, nineteen sixty-eight, and added to in nineteen eighty-eight, making the principle of fair housing not only federal law and national policy, but a fundamental human right and entitlement for all citizens. It requires that all federal programs relating to housing and urban development be administered in manner that affirmatively furthers fair housing. Whereas this law, and as amended, as well as laws of New York State, prohibits discrimination from any property owner, landlord, property manager, or other person in relation to the sale, rental, and financing of dwellings and in other housing-related transactions because of certain protective characteristics which include, but are not limited to, race, color, religion, sex, including gender identity and sexual orientation, familial status, national origin, and physical or mental disability. Whereas the need for shelter is one of the most basic and fundamental human needs and plays a pivotal role in ensuring a safe community. The right freely to choose a place to live is a basic human right, and discrimination in housing-related activities is not only against the law, it goes against the principles of our city, state, and country, and ensures the well-being of our community. Whereas Fair Housing Month provides an opportunity to highlight the importance of housing, reaffirm the city's commitment and recognize all neighbors, businesses, property managers, and owners who reside in our community, acknowledging their vital contributions as well as the richness engendered by the mix of young and old, male and female, disabled and undisabled, people of all colors, ethnic and cultural backgrounds, and religious traditions in our communities. Therefore, I, William J. Alio, as mayor of the city of Olean, New York, on April twenty-third, two thousand twenty-four, do hereby proclaim that the month of April, two thousand twenty-four, is to be observed as Fair Housing Month in the city of Olean, New York. In testimony thereof, I appear unto, set my hand, and cause to be affixed the seal of the city of Olean the twenty-third day of April, two thousand twenty-four. For the city of Olean, New York, signed, William J. Alio, Mayor. Another proclamation to recognize Arbor Day. Whereas in eighteen seventy-two, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. Whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska. Whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world. Whereas trees serve many functions, they can reduce the erosion of topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife. Whereas trees are a renewable resource, they increase property values, and are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Whereas Olean has been recognized as a Tree City USA by the National Arbor Day Foundation and will continue the preservation practices that were implanted in our communities during the thirty-year tenure of the city's late forester, Susan Cooper. Therefore, I, William J. Alio, Mayor of the city of Olean, do hereby proclaim April twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-three, as Arbor Day in the city of Olean. And I urge all citizens to support efforts to care for our trees and woodlands and to support our city's community forestry program. In testimony thereof, I have here unto, set my hand, and cause to be affixed the seal of the city of Olean on the twenty-third day of April, two thousand twenty-four. For the city of Olean, signed, William J. Alio, Mayor.
All right, miscellaneous communications.
None.
City official reports?
None.
Propose legislation and referrals?
Burning your teeth tonight, huh? It's easy for you to say.
PL thirty-three dash twenty-four by Mayor Alio, referred to regular meeting Tuesday, April twenty-third, two thousand twenty-four, for resolution by council president. PL number thirty-four dash twenty-four by Mayor Alio, referred to committee of the whole, Tuesday, April twenty-third, two thousand twenty-four, by council president. PL thirty-five dash twenty-four by Mayor Alio, referred to committee of the whole, Tuesday, April twenty-third, two thousand twenty-four, by council president. PL thirty-six dash twenty-four. Thirty-six?
Yeah. PL thirty-six dash twenty-four was postponed, given an extra committee of the whole.
PL thirty-seven dash twenty-four by Mayor Alio, referred to committee of the whole, Tuesday, April twenty-third, two thousand twenty-four, by council president. And PL thirty-eight dash twenty-four by Mayor Alio, referred to committee of the whole, Tuesday, April twenty-third, two thousand twenty-four, by council president.
Okay, before I open it up to public comment, I'd like to give an opportunity to any of the, Alderman, if you'd say it this night. Alderman, Corney?
Yeah, I just would like to thank everyone that came out on Saturday, April twentieth, to help at Framshott and cleaning up the park and painting. A special thank you to Vincent Alonra, Alonra, of Urban Inspirations for painting in the mural. Also the residents that came out, the Boy Scouts that were there before we got there, which we really appreciate. The fire department, the mayor, the aldermen, and just everyone that was able to lend some time on Saturday morning. Really appreciate the efforts. A lot was picked up, there's a lot to do, but I really, you know, I think on behalf of the council, we all appreciate everyone that made the effort to come out on Saturday.
Yeah, well said, Jen, and I think the mural turned out just absolutely incredible. I hope that it's just another step in the direction of doing more of those murals and around town. All right, anything else? All right, at this time, I'll ask the clerk to please read the public comment statement.
The public comment portion of the common council regular meeting is established to provide members of the community with the opportunity to publicly state their views, voice their concerns, or to provide input pertaining to any issue affecting city government. Additionally, the mayor, common council members, and city department heads encourage any person with questions to contact them at their offices.
All right, at this time, I will invite any members of the public, approach the podium, state your name and address, we'll have five minutes.
My name is Nova Meck, I live at three two one South Berry Street. Before I begin, I would like to say that it's a rather high-paying day for me. I'm having a little bit of trouble concentrating and I'm having trouble reading my own notes, so I apologize if I'm a little scattered, right? Last meeting, I came and spoke about the garden at Four Mile Brewery, which is at the end of the street where I live. As a recap, I have to walk past there whenever I go out. That is the only area where I can safely cross the street to get to Reed's, to get to a park, to get anywhere. The proprietor of that business has for over a year not taken care of the garden. There are thorn bushes growing out into the sidewalk. There are other bushes that have been growing out for years. I spoke to a previous resident of the same house that I lived at. She said that as far as she knows, they have never taken care of that garden. This is dangerous for me as I am partially blind and I am physically otherwise disabled. I have gotten multiple injuries because of this. I went out and measured the bushes today, because the last time I went to Reed's, I came back with more scratches than usual. The rains have meant that the thorn bushes are growing leaves now and have had a growth spurt. They are taking up a third of the sidewalk in part of where I have to walk. And in certain lighting conditions, I cannot see them. In other places, some of the bushes are hanging into the path by over a foot in multiple places. The brewery is also the only place along that entire block that has yet to mow their grass all year. It is extra long now. To avoid the bushes, I may have to walk through that grass, which is very bumpy ground. And I have injured myself because I can't see those bumps. And now they are covered under six to eight inches of grass in some places, seven in others. Would any of you allow a child or a loved one to walk through an area that they cannot see in with literal thorns hanging out into the path? Other branches hanging out at eye level, chest level, and shin level, where they cannot see. They have to just keep walking along a path that they know is there. This is my reality. This has caused me injury multiple times. It still has not been taken care of despite multiple times that I have asked the city for help and I've asked the proprietor to please take care of that property. And he has not. He has used discriminatory language against me. He has made it clear that he would rather I jaywalk than him take care of that. This has left me with potentially permanent injuries. I don't know yet, because I have not had time to heal in any meaningful way. The injuries that have happened to my back because of this have resulted in me not being able to do my own dishes consistently. I can't cook if I don't have dishes. I cannot eat consistently because of this. This has impacted my entire life. This has also impacted the city, believe it or not. When I first came here, I fell in love with the city. And despite the fact that I came here while I was sick, I went out and did what I did at my previous residence. I would go out and pick up trash. I would clear storm drains after storms to make sure that water could flow into them. Framshott was actually where I did my most work. I had intended to step up my volunteering this year. I wanted to take care of the children's garden there because it was so overgrown with weeds. I can't even take care of myself because I need a dishwasher that I cannot afford because of these injuries. I feel abandoned by the city. I've asked many times, I've sent emails, I have sent messages along. I even contacted the mayor after he personally gave me his email address. I received no response or acknowledgement from anyone. Thank you.
I'm Rebecca Bear, I live at three oh seven York Street. So I have a couple of questions. I know that the audit was discussed, you know, a couple agendas ago, a couple meetings ago. But I just want to know, can we just clarify what that audit was, what the year was? Was that twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-four, or twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-three?
So just so you're aware, so that was the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three budget here that the audit was conducted for. But typically, this is not, it's not Q and A. So public comment is by all means, feel free to make comments, suggestions, questions. And Alderman, your alderman, your, myself, the mayor, whomever, can follow back up. If you can email us, call us, whatever, and if you have any questions. If you can email us, call us, whatever, and leave any questions.
I'll just email then, if y'all don't answer the questions, then I'll just go ahead and email it. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Anything else? Anything else? Anything else? Seeing none, I'll call public comment, quote. Providing two bills.
The auditor has processed bills and claims against the City of Oleane, as per this submitted to each Alderman and recommends payment thereof. Whereas the auditor has presented to the common council bills and claims against the City of Oleane totaling $933,486.99 for the budget and recommends payment thereof. Now therefore be it resolved at the same fee and are hereby audited and allowed, and the auditor is hereby authorized and directed to draw warrants for the payment thereof at the amount set opposite each respective claim.
We've all received, we've all received financing bills for this month. Are there any comments or questions? Seeing none, I'll entertain the sponsor. Motion is made by Alderman Panis, could I get a second? Second by Alderman Corney. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman Benyon?
Yes.
Alderman Panis?
Yes.
Alderman Corney?
Yes.
Alderman McCall?
Yes.
Alderman Robinson?
Yes.
Alderman Anastasia?
Yes.
And President Crawford?
Yes.
The resolution passed as seven thirty. Resolution number 38-24, P L. number 33-24, to amend the water and sewer infrastructure and billing policy to amend the fee for rolling unpaid balances to taxes each year to $250.
All right, we talked about this previously in the committee. Are there any comments or questions? Seeing none, will the clerk please, I'm sorry, we do need some sponsors. Motion is made by Alderman McCall, seconded by Alderman Benyon. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman Benyon?
Here.
Yes. There you go, Jim. Say the yes.
Yes.
Jason, Alderman Panis?
Yes.
Alderman Corney?
Yes.
Alderman McCall?
Yes.
Alderman Robinson?
Yes.
Alderman Anastasia?
Yes.
And President Crawford?
Yes.
Resolution passes unanimously. Resolution number 39-24, P L. number 34-24, out of committee by Alderman Robinson, seconded by Alderman Corney, to proclaim the month of April, 2024, as Fair Housing Month in the City of Oleane.
All right, any comments, questions? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman Benyon?
Yes.
Alderman Panis?
Yes.
Alderman Corney?
Yes.
Alderman McCall?
Yes.
Alderman Robinson?
Yes.
Alderman Anastasia?
Yes.
And President Crawford?
Yes.
Resolution passes unanimously. Resolution number 40-24, P L. number 35-24, out of committee by Alderman Crawford, seconded by Alderman Benyon, to adopt the pro-housing communities pledge relating to the home and community renewal, pro-housing communities.
All right, comments, questions? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman Benyon?
Yes.
Alderman Panis?
Yes.
Alderman Corney?
Yes.
Alderman McCall?
Yes.
Alderman Robinson?
Yes.
Alderman Anastasia?
Yes.
And President Crawford?
Yes.
Resolution passes unanimously. Resolution number 41-24 is to postpone. Resolution number 42-24, P L. number 38-24, out of committee by Alderman Robinson, seconded by Alderman Anastasia. Resolution authorizing the transfer of funds from the first-time homebuyer account to capital fund number 204.
All right, any comments, questions? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman Benyon?
Yes.
Alderman Panis?
Yes.
Alderman Corney?
Yes.
Alderman McCall?
Yes.
Alderman Robinson?
Yes.
Alderman Anastasia?
Yes.
And President Crawford?
Yes.
Resolution passes unanimously.
I'll make a motion to suspend the rules. Could I get a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman McCall, all in favor. I oppose, motion carried. I'll motion to amend the agenda to include Resolution 43-24. Could I get a second, please?
Second.
Second by Alderman Robinson, all in favor. I oppose, motion carried. Resolution 43-24, Mr. Clerk?
To amend the 2004, 2025 budget.
Okay, so this is what we discussed previously in the meeting of the whole. Any comments, questions? Seeing none, I'll make the motion. Could I get a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman McCall. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman Benyon?
Yes.
Alderman Panis?
Yes.
Alderman Corney?
Yes.
Alderman McCall?
Yes.
Alderman Robinson?
Yes.
Alderman Anastasia?
No.
And President Crawford?
Yes.
Resolution passes six highs, one day.
I'll make the motion to enter executive session to discuss a personnel matter. Can I get a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Corney, all in favor.
I oppose, motion carried.